Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for Tuesday, April 12, 2022. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city's website and City Channel's Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Yeah.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Cal Smith, Reverend Burgess Chair.
Here.
Four members present.
Cory is on.
He's on.
We need him to say aye.
Councilman.
Joe Carter, are you with us? Well, we will have to wait to have a fifth member present.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Five members present.
So, all right, that brings us to our roll call. Can you please start from the beginning and please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O-
Here.
Ms. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Cal Smith, Reverend Burgess Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much. As we join from our remote locations and those in the chambers who are with us, if you do not mind, please rise and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will remain standing for a moment of silence. And for those of you who believe in the power of prayer, even prayer.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And is there any amendments to the agenda?
No.
There's no amendments to the agenda. There's no need to amend it. The next order of business is proclamations. We have one by Ms. Gross that's partially permitted, partially presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was, we have joining with us by Zoom, I think the Director of our Commission on Human Relations. And so I'm going to ask the clerks to read this into the record, but then we'll also take some comments from Director Hammond.
Councilwoman Gross presents, whereas April 11, 2021 marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act, which was amended, pronounces a national policy mandating fair housing opportunities for all citizens regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, or familial status. And whereas on December 16, 1958, Mayor David Lawrence signed the Fair Housing Practices Ordinance into effect, which as amended additionally prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of ancestry, gender identity, gender expression, place of birth, sexual orientation, status as a victim of domestic violence, citizenship or immigration status, preferred language or hairstyle. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, whether subtle or blatant, diminish the rights of all and violate our community's shared and deeply held values of equality and dignity for all. Whereas the Fair Housing Act clarified a responsibility of federal and federally funded state and local governments to affirmatively further fair housing and take actions to undo historic patterns of segregation and other types of discrimination and afford access to opportunity that has long been denied. Whereas the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations convened the Affirmative Furthering Fair Housing Task Force, which released 12 recommendations to the city of Pittsburgh for decreasing discrimination and increasing equity in housing. And whereas the city through its mayor, council, commissions, departments, and authorities still work toward achieving the recommendations of the affirmatively furthering housing, fair housing tax force and ending housing inequity for its citizens. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in the city of Pittsburgh who abide by the letter and spirit of the fair housing law in the pursuit of expanding opportunities and improving the quality of life for all. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh commits to make every effort to support the citizens of Pittsburgh and the departments, boards, offices, and authorities of the City of Pittsburgh in their fight to indiscrimination in housing and affirmatively further fair housing. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby proclaim April 2022 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Give a second. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Ms. Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. I also just wanted to thank our Commission on Human Relations and our fair housing partnership in the City of Pittsburgh for decades of good work in keeping people in their homes and being sure that people have all of the housing rights that are afforded to them by federal law and by our city charter. I also just wanted to acknowledge that I was happy to do a press conference last week with both Director Confer Hammond and Director Jim Hammond on the welcoming the former United Nations rapporteur on housing, Leilani Farah. And she was in town to speak to all of the kinds of things that we can do better as a city, as citizens, to ensure housing as a human right. It was wonderful that she came to town. It was wonderful that our partnerships were so active in bringing her here. I just wanted to, I'll turn it over to Director Hammond to talk about Fair Housing Month, but also to thank all of the partnerships and activists who have been working so hard, especially in these last two years of the pandemic, to fight against unfair evictions in the city, to again, keep us all accountable to our citizens in ensuring their housing rights and continuing to keep this in front of us as a public conversation. Director Hammond, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, and I'll keep myself brief because I have a feeling that my connection isn't that great. But I really appreciate the opportunity to say a few words about Fair Housing Month. April is National Fair Housing Month. We're celebrating it nationally. But of course, here in Pittsburgh, it's especially important when we look at our housing market to really acknowledge the issues that we've been seeing as fair housing issues and as affordable housing issues that we have to tackle as a city. And I'm going to give a shout out to the Mortgage Bankers Association of Southwest PA, that's where I am right now, to talk to them about fair housing. So we're acknowledging, of course, that this is a problem that is going to take more than one actor. We're going to need the city working together with the county, working together with groups of professionals, housing professionals, with the citizens of our city, the residents, the tenants. We're going to need everyone working together to really tackle fair housing as an issue. And I'm excited to move forward with those plans. And I'm excited about our meeting last week, and I'm hoping that we can keep this momentum going so we can really see fair housing change for the City of Pittsburgh. So thank you so much for allowing me to say a few words, and thank you for ensuring that this proclamation is on everyone's radars.
Thank you very much. That moves us to, we have two more proclamations to be read to the record.
Councilman Wilson presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh designates the week of April 11 through to 15, 2022, as National Community Development Week in support of this valuable program that has made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and the economic well-being of our city. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh urges the United States Congress and the Biden Administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally with CDBG by supporting increased funding for the program in the fiscal year 2023. And Council President Cal Smith presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize city and state PA for the work they do in covering important issues in and around the City of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 12, 2022, to be City and State PA Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Give your second. Any other conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. That brings us to the next order of business, which is public comment. I would like to, I'm sorry, Mr. Kraus.
Yeah, I have a will of counsel.
I didn't.
On the next page, Mr. Chair.
Oh, here it goes.
Okay. Perhaps we would place that under motions and resolutions on the agenda then.
Do you want to do it? We can do it now.
No, we can do it at the end. That's just fine. Thank you.
Sure?
Uh, no, fine, honest.
Okay, the next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited only to matters of concern, official action, and deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted. And I will use this time, every time I preside between now and the fall, that we are going to start policing that law. That if speakers, you're free to say whatever you want at any time you want, except we don't have to tell about it. And so when you begin to give comments of neighborhood concerns that are not germane to council and personal concerns are not germane to council, probably in the fall, we will cut off the mic and remove you from your time. This time is deliberately spent for you to give us your concern about council-related legislative matters. That's the whole purpose of public comment. And so I'm starting to say that more often because we will start forcing this probably in September. So I'm giving you fair warning about the changes that council will probably make. Okay, maybe we have the first speaker, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have to do, I didn't have the contact sheet in front of me. I'm so sorry. If you excuse me, I have to do it in order. I'm sorry. I will get to you, though. I promise. Naomi Mullen, you are the first speaker up.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Shady trees, not shady deals in Von Air. Not only do the property owners of Von Air not consent to anything but a green space to replace the school, we absolutely do not agree to reapportionment. Leave it. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by B.C. Douglas Paskovich. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had questions, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate friend, father, brother, relative, and friend. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life, as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is a needed reparation for Von Air. Do your part. Shady trees, not shady deals in Von Air. Thank you.
Dr. Rado Miller is not present. That takes us to Brianna Franzino. Brianna, are you with us? Online? Ms. Franzino?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Good morning. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak today. I am a student at Seton Hill University in Greensburg, PA. And as part of my studies, I have undertaken a research project that investigates dichloromethane, which is a chemical compound that is found in Pittsburgh's drinking water. And it is created as a byproduct through the cleaning process. And it has created a very poor representation for the City of Pittsburgh as it is highlighted through many online articles and research projects. So when you look up the City of Pittsburgh, that's one of the first things that come up. And the more and more that this is prevalent in our society, the more people are going to hear about it and therefore get sick. So there are a plethora of health effects that come with this. And I actually have another student here with me that's on the list who is doing the research project with me who will go more in depth on what those health effects are. But I wanted to bring the immediate attention of this issue to you guys to show that it is a big issue and that it's going to be one that will keep coming up and it will soon affect the health of our citizens. It's already affecting the health of our citizens. And that will transfer into economy effects. People aren't going to want to come to Pittsburgh because of these health effects. People are going to start moving out of Pittsburgh. And we will shortly see the instability being created through this major health issue. Drinking water is obviously one of the very basic human rights that we deserve as citizens. And I feel that it is part of the City of Pittsburgh's duty to do something about this, even if it might not be in the eyes of every citizen right now. It soon will be if this keeps going on. So it is important that we take immediate action and start taking action sooner rather than later so that we can do something about this and make sure that everybody's living a healthy and happy life here in the City of Pittsburgh that we all love so much. And we did create a research policy brief describing all of the aspects of this chemical compound that we would like to share with the members of City Council. And we will be following up with an email shortly describing this policy brief to each of you. And I'm giving a little bit more detail on what this is and why we think it's so important. But that chemical compound, again, is bromodichloromethane. It's something that you could look up easily and you will see Pittsburgh come up time and time again. So we would-
And next speaker is Adrian Scott. Adrian?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Ariana Scott. I am with Brianna Franzino, who you just heard speak about bromodichloromethane. And now I'm going to speak more about the health effects. So Bree talked about the economic and social effects that this has, but I want to take this more to a micro level and talk about the ways that actual human beings are affected. So bromodichloromethane, as Bree said, is a byproduct of the cleaning process. So with all of the bacteria that is in our water to start, when we clean it with chlorine, a byproduct is created, and that byproduct is bromodichloromethane. Now, this chemical compound is actually pretty dangerous. We don't hear about it much because it's not well researched. Most of the research is done on like lab animals, like rats and mice. And one of the things in our policy brief is bringing attention to the fact that we need research done for this. But Pittsburgh has one of the highest levels of bromodichloromethane in the nation. It's in the top five, and the Environmental Working Group has set a standard of 0.06 parts per billion of bromodichloromethane in water that is acceptable. And right now Pittsburgh has 16.5 parts per billion. That is 276, 276 times the, like, above what the Environmental Working Group recommends. Now, this compound has major effects on our health, as I stated before. But these are things that are super concerning, such as liver cancer and kidney cancer, as well as impaired immune responses. We also have other things like reproductive issues such as, especially female reproductive issues like disrupted menstrual cycles and issues concerning pregnancy and birth. So these are all things that impact human life, and we're not necessarily seeing that. I would also like to note that Allegheny County has one of the highest cancer rates in the nation, and we often attribute this to our air quality. But in reality, it's a mix of all of the different chemicals that we have in our lives. So I urge council to look into bromodichloromethane and read the policy brief that Brianna Franzino and I have created. Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry for mispronouncing your name, Arianna. Next is Natalie Alwisch. Hopefully I'm close.
You nailed it. Hi, my name is Natalie Alwisch. I'm the Executive Director of Humane Action Pittsburgh. We're a local nonprofit dedicated to animal protection through community action, education, and policy change. I'm here today to speak in support of Councilperson Straussberger's plastic bag legislation. We all know that single-use plastic is dangerous to our environment, but it's also hazardous to human health and animals. So we still have a lot of work to do to make Pittsburgh the clean and healthy city that it needs to be. But this bill is a really important step in making that happen. So thank you so much to Councilperson Straussberger for introducing this bill and also all of your due diligence and hard work. And thank you to all of council for considering this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Ashley Deemer. Good morning, Ashley.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Ashley Deemer, and I'm the Deputy Director of Penn Environment. And we are a statewide environmental advocacy organization that fights for clean air, clean water, a healthy climate, and protecting our beautiful natural places across Pennsylvania. We are located in Pittsburgh on Murray Avenue in Squirrel Hill. And I'm here for the second time in seven days to thank you for your unanimous preliminary vote in favor of the Pittsburgh plastic bag ban. As we look forward to the final vote today, I just want to take a moment to congratulate you all on what I think is an incredibly impactful and straightforward policy that everyone can get behind. We as a city and a region are going to work together to reduce plastic waste that we don't want in our communities, that we don't want in our homes and in our environment. Plastic that we really never asked for, and plastic that is polluting our water, our air, and harming our climate from cradle to grave. Nothing that we use for five minutes should have such a profound and lasting impact on our communities, our environment, and our health. Pittsburgh uses nearly 110 million plastic bags every year, so this law will have a major impact. That's about 1.3 million pounds of plastic that we're keeping out of our waste stream. And this new law in Pittsburgh is part of a broader movement across Pennsylvania. Just last night, Haverford became the fifth municipality in the Commonwealth to ban plastic bags. And today, I hope Pittsburgh will become the sixth, your final vote. Together as Pittsburghers, along with other cities and towns in Pennsylvania, we can make a really significant difference. And I will reiterate that this bill has broad public support right here in Pittsburgh. More than 130 businesses, neighborhood groups, and advocacy organizations have signed on in support of this measure. And council has received supportive emails and calls from the public. And more than a dozen people came to last week's meeting to voice their support for the bill. And so, on behalf of Penn Environment and our thousands of members in Pittsburgh, as well as the many coalition partners who are excited to see this bill pass, thank you. In particular, thank you to Councilperson Straussberger for championing this issue and working through a really comprehensive public engagement process. By talking to business owners, community leaders, consumers, and advocates, you've really created a bill that will objectively, I think, work for everyone. I also want to thank the cosponsors, Councilman Kraus, Councilman Wilson, and Councilman O'Connor, who've been really supportive and encouraging throughout this process. And finally, I just want to thank you all for such a positive discussion at last week's meeting. I really couldn't have asked for better leadership in this room on this issue. So I'm excited for Pittsburgh to move beyond plastic bags, and I look forward to continuing to work with this, with you on this. And I urge you to vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you much. That takes us to Regina Brown. Regina Brown? Is Regina online? No? No? Okay. That brings us to Jim Hammond. Jim was on earlier. All right, so perhaps not. Next is Joy Bronstein. Joy?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joy Bronstein. I'm the Western Pennsylvania Director of Policy for Clean Water Action. And like my friends and colleagues Natalie and Ashley, who just spoke on this issue, I'm here to thank you, dear esteemed members of council, for taking this historic and amazing step in Pittsburgh's environmental progress to assure that by next Earth Day 2023, there will be no more single-use plastic bags or non-recycled paper bags distributed to shoppers. This is an incredible step, as Ashley and Natalie both said. We'll be joining with hundreds of other municipalities in 25 different states who have joined the movement to get plastic bags out of our environment, our waterways, our parks, our playgrounds, our streets, and take the microplastics that break down and affect our health and the health of the environment and the health of the animals that live in that environment out of places like our lungs. Recently, we've been hearing a lot of information about microplastics and the damage that they do to our lungs. We all know in Pittsburgh, it's hard enough to breathe sometimes without the mix of that in it. I'm representing Clean Water Action and all of our members in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and beyond. When I say from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Councilwoman Straussberger, and your cosponsors, Councilman Strauss, O'Connor, and Wilson, for bringing this to a vote today. This is a really well-written and thoughtful piece of legislation that Pittsburgh deserves. Thank you, everyone who plans to vote yes for this. I hope this is unanimous. Let's do this and ban plastic bags, single-use plastic bags, from our great city. Thank you.
Exhaust our register speakers. Now those who have joined with us in the hall, you are now permitted to come. First, next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Les Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. We're in the killing season. It's a terrible statement to make. But you all, I'm sure, saw the picture of our current mayor consoling people on another death by shooting. Do we really understand what is going on that is producing statistics? Do we really understand what is going on that is producing statistics that are scary? Or are we just blindly going through the motions of investigating the deaths because we have to by law? I, for one, believe that I can produce the money if it's a money situation, and I'm waiting for a signature by our mayor for non-circumvention and recognition of the fact that if I work, I have to be paid. What do you do with the money? Well, money spends. It won't sit around. So the question of identifying the real causes of the problems, is it dope? Is it hunger? Hunger that was seen years ago by Ollie Mason, when he actually gunned down eight young men because they were breaking into the Giant Eagle across from Center Avenue? And he put out a warning. And eight bodies fell through the skylight, young ones looking for something to eat. Are these the reasons that we're working for? If we don't define them first, how can we attack them? Even with money? Money isn't an answer in to itself. So I urge, uh, the city and this council to take a good look at what the problems really are, the underlying problems are, so that a proper and complete approach can be designed to try and reduce the terrible statistics that, that I think we're all realistic about, that we expect to see this season. We're in the killing season. All I'm asking for is an opportunity to produce money that might help to answer the issues. The issues have to be defined. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Tom Brady. I live up Mount Washington, three fifty-two. I'm here for two reasons today. I just got done talking to Bruce's staff about the meeting we had up on Bailey, um, about Bailey Avenue. Uh, we're, we're going to schedule another appointment in May with Bruce to get this straightened out. It was too dangerous up there with the speeding on it. They were two guys, Bruce, um, mentioned at the meeting, they were going seventy-eight miles an hour on Bailey Avenue in the winter time, not in the summertime, winter time. And the other day, a car made, oh, didn't make the bend and almost crashed into that iron fence around again, and it's just dangerous. So we want to schedule another appointment in May, Bruce, and I talked to your staff about that, so that's one thing. Number two, I guess I come down at the right time because you're talking about waste. Thing about the waste is, we got to put it somewhere. We get, we collect it off the street, and we're having two problems. Mr. Coghill, I've talked to you this before. We've got to get a trash can down on Boggs Avenue in, in Warrenton down there because that's a pigpen down there. And the other day, um, what was it, twelve days ago, they removed the trash can up in, um, Grandview Park because it was damaged. I don't understand this is, don't remove it until you have one on the truck, because when you remove it, you don't come back with another one, and people are littering up there again. And I, this morning, I just picked up so much trash. We need the trash cans. I understand that with the plastic bags, we don't, we can't use that as much, but we got to get rid of the litter, so we need trash cans. So I'm down here on myself and a friend of yours, a Republican on Mount Washington named Ron, says, let's get it done. So we need to get those trash cans to get this stuff done. If you want the city to clean, you've got to put them in something, so we need trash cans. So if you do that, I appreciate that. As again, one on Bay, I mean Boggs and Warrenton, and one in Grandview Park that were the sculptures that it is getting to be a pigpen up there again. We don't need to see that up there. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bruce, for coming to the meeting. It was very nice of you. I appreciate that. We'll see you at the next meeting. Take care and all have a nice day, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne Fronn. I live in the Hill District up at Kaylee where it was at the top of the hill. I want to start off first by saying kudos to Sir and Alex. They work in your marriage and passport department, and I felt that they're an asset to your city. A lot of times, people complain about the city and the employees, and some of you don't need to be working with, with citizens from the street because you don't seem to understand that all we want was service. We don't care who you prefer and how you prefer them. We want to be waited on, and I want to say something to you, Mrs. Gross. Mrs. Gross, that beautiful statement you wrote about fair housing, why didn't you consider the hill whenever they were going to get the new chief of police? The mayor has said that he would go to every neighborhood. Marty Griffin on the radio, oh, 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 he's going to need all this overtime. He don't need to do that. I called in and said, yeah, he does need to do it. Marty said, why? I said, because he needs to hear us, and we need to hear him. And as Ms. Gross stood that day, and I'm telling you, it's not that I don't like Ms. Gross. I don't like her actions. When she stood in this room and said, oh, me and the mayor, we decided that the meeting from the hill would be in her district. Now, she lives in Bloomfield or, uh, in whatever area she lives, those people don't care. They live very close. They don't have cars. We live up on the hill, and we can't afford to get cars. You could have had the meeting in the city, in city council, not in your district, the same way you had a meeting, had a meeting for the hill, up in the hill district. But you had Mangino on KDKA talk about all the criminals up in the hill. So the white people are not going to come, and you have a meeting about race relationship, and all it is is black people, and you, Ms. Gross, you didn't even come to the meeting. And I looked at the courier, went to her and asked her some questions. Why are they coming just to you? Why are you being so favored? I know you're on different committees, but they listen to everything you say. Another thing I want you to understand, I feel very bad whenever we, you sit at this table, and I'm talking to the back of their head. They need to sit around, face us like you do over at county council. There's twelve of them, and they face us. That's the way you need to. I don't need to talk to the back of your head, and that's why you don't stop talking to each other, because you don't look in my eyes. You're looking at each other. The two of you is talking all the time, and you, Mr. Coghill, they told me you do not answer, uh, emails. Why not? Why are you so good that you said your, 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 um, other man doesn't? You're supposed to do it. You are the council person. You're supposed to know every email that comes in there. If you don't answer it, someone should, but you say you don't. That's a good councilman, huh?
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Any other speakers today? See, none. That takes us to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation, Mr. Coghill, for me.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number two forty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the city into a grant agreement with Chester County Immediate Unit for the purpose of receiving funds in the amount of eighty thousand dollars that will be used to purchase technology and other materials needed for the facilitation of computer science learning experiences for children attending educational programs at select City of Pittsburgh recreation centers.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number two forty-nine, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the James T. Givner Building Project located at six twenty-seven North Homewood Avenue. Bill number two fifty, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the PHC Development LLC Project located at one eighty-six Home Street.
That takes us to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources. Thank you very much. No new papers. Uh, co, thank you. Uh, Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number two fifty-one, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in the Amount of eleven thousand one hundred twenty dollars and ten cent in settlement of a claim for damage to an impact alternator and SR fifty-one near Woodrow Street for, from a city police vehicle. Bill number two fifty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with the Commonwealth Press for Services Relating to the Design, Production, and Marketing and Sale of Officially Licensed and Branded City of Pittsburgh Merchandise. Bill number two fifty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with the National Traffic Safety Institute for Professional Services Relating to a Driver Training E-Learning System for a sum not to exceed thirty-one thousand five hundred over three years and for the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman O'Connor, uh, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number two fifty-four, Resolution Amending Resolution four thirty entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Grant Agreements to Receive Funding from the Allegheny County Health Department to Develop a Public Health Informed Diversion Program and Further Providing for Expenditures Under the Terms of Said Agreement to Increase the Amount Authorized by the Grant Agreement and the Amount Authorized for Expenditures.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill number two fifty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into an Agreement with SciCom Data Systems Inc. for Professional Services Relating to Continuing Maintenance, Support, and Upgrades to City Law, the Department of Law's Current Legal Case Management and Administrative Support Software System at a Cost Not to Exceed eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number two fifty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection to Enter into an Agreement with RJ Lee Group for Professional Services Providing Materials for an Analysis of Lead Dust Samples Pertaining to PLI's Execution of the City of Pittsburgh Lead Safe Ordinance for a Sum Not to Exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you much. Um, Councilwoman Kell Smith, the Chair of Hearings, uh, the, um, the Chair of Hearings, I do not see anything for Councilwoman Smith. That takes us to, um, it takes us to any unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? See none? That takes us to the Report of Committee for Final Action. Uh, that starts with Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number two forty-one, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for April sixth, twenty twenty-two, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number two twenty, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Eighty-nine, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Freedom Indeed LLC, Reverend Cornell Jones, for professional services as a group violence intervention coordinator at a cost not to exceed five hundred one thousand nine hundred and eight dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? See none? The bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill is, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Uh, the bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman, uh, Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number two forty-two, Report of the Committee on Public Works for April sixth, twenty twenty-two, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number two oh nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Local share account statewide proposal includes an ask of nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars for this stated purpose. Bill number two ten, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Three Thirty-two, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the Three Rivers Heritage Trail Repaving Project to Accept the Grant and Authorize Necessary Expenditures. Bill number two thirteen, Resolution Providing for a Supplementary Agreement for Construction Services with Norfolk Southern Railway Company for the West Ohio Street Bridge Project at a Cost Not to Exceed five hundred twelve thousand one hundred and seven dollars, an increase of one hundred nine thousand twenty-one dollars from the previously executed agreement. Bill number two fourteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account Statewide to Provide Funding for the Construction of a Maintenance Facility in the Fourth District. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of one million dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any act, any other discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Uh, the bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That brings us to Councilman, uh, Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill number two forty-three, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for April sixth, twenty twenty-two, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number two fifteen, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Three Eighty-seven, which authorizes the city to enter into an amended professional services agreement with corporate cost control for third-party administration of the City of Pittsburgh's liabilities under the Pennsylvania Unemployment Compensation Act for four additional years of services by extending this contract for an additional four years and authorized spend for these additional years.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? The bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the, of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
Bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number two forty-four, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for April sixth, twenty twenty-two, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twelve, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the City Code at Title Six, Conduct Article One, Regulated Rights and Actions by Adding a New Chapter Six Ten Entitled Prohibition on the Use of Certain Bags and Checkout Bag Charge to Permit the Use of Only Certain Bags by Retail Establishment. by Retail Establishment at the Point of Sale or for a Delivery and Establishing a Charge Payable by the Customer to the Establishment for the Provisions of Other Types of Bags, all under Certain Terms and Conditions. Bill Number 222, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Interface Studio LLC in the Amount $599,000 for Additional Services for Overreach for 36 Hours for Stakeholder Interviews, 43 Hours for Public Engagement, and 14 Hours for Agency Coordination Relating to the Manchester TRID Project.
There's a, the, we, ma'am clerk, I sort of just said that the balance that you read was not correct. Could you read it again, please?
For Bill 222?
Yes.
Bill 222, sorry. Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Interface Studios LLC in the Amount of $5,990.90 for Additional Services for Overreach, 36 Hours for Stakeholder Interviews, 43 Hours for Public Engagement, and 14 Hours for Agency Coordination Relating to the Manchester TRID Project.
You corrected it.
$5,990.
Okay. Thank you. You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? The bill is now ready for final, I'm sorry. Ms. Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding Bill 12, I did want to, I appreciate your indulgence. I did want to speak briefly on this. This is really landmark legislation, and this ban on single-use plastics is going to impact our city in a very positive way. When it goes into effect, it will sharply curtail litter, it will mitigate stormwater risk, it will reduce the amount of dangerous microplastics that we know collect in our soil and our rivers and our water, in our drinking water. It'll improve our recycling efforts, and it will begin to break our reliance on and our dependence on fossil fuel-based products. And so I really just wanted to take some time to thank everyone who has contributed to this, to this bill and to the point that we are today. First and foremost, my council colleagues, Councilman Wilson, Councilman Kraus, and Councilman O'Connor. I also want to recognize Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Coghill, who spoke out in favor of this and so eloquently last week. I want to thank Sustainable Pittsburgh and their work with the Plastics Collaborative as a convener of a coalition devoted to rethinking our reliance on plastic beyond plastic bags and how we can move forward. Humane Action Pittsburgh and their support and feedback with the legislation. Pittsburghers, again, single-use plastic. Pittsburgh Food Policy Council members for providing feedback on the legislation and co-hosting the work sessions that we had to really sharpen the details of this bill and make it an improved bill earlier this year. Penn Environment, especially Ashley Deemer, who has been such an integral part of moving this bill forward, and everyone who provided feedback on support of this legislation. Logan Weld from Clean Air Council, Pennsylvania Resources Council, the City of Pittsburgh Office of Sustainability and Resilience, City of Pittsburgh Environmental Services, sustainability leaders from our universities in our city. I want to recognize Clean Water Action and Joy Bronstein for her support and assistance in the bill, and the Business and Labor Organizations we've consulted with. Chef Claudie Pierre and the Eat Initiative, Giant Eagle, which has voiced its support, its wholehearted support and pledge of assistance on this, on implementing this. United Food and Commercial Workers, Local 1776, several independent restaurants and store owners, Chatham University students in Dr. Jenny Sweet Krishman's class working on outreach and education materials that will help us in the next year. And I couldn't forget my dedicated staff and interns over the last, really, four years when we started researching this work, this bill. First and foremost, my Chief of Staff Emily Yonan, who has put in countless, countless hours to bring us to the moment we are at today. So, thank you all. I'm probably missing, even in that exhaustive list, I'm probably missing a lot of people. This has just been a whole community effort, and it will continue to be a community effort as we work over the next few years to implement this bill. Thank you, truly.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So, I would like to begin by thanking Councilwoman Strasburger for her efforts. This, as you heard her delineate this, what she called an exhaustive list of participants, you can see the amount of time, effort, work, and energy that went into this historic passage of this bill. And I would like to reference that exhaustive list of people that the councilwoman referred to for a better understanding of the public at large, how these things happen. This is a no-nonsense conversation about the reduction of single-use plastic bags, and yet you can see by the delineation of the people that needed to be engaged in this, how complex and complicated these, the simple, what we believe to be the simplest of things to accomplish, can take, I hate to say forever, but takes extended periods of time and effort and energy and tenacity to be able to see it through. And I would think the quality that the councilwoman expressed above all else was her tenacious nature. Regardless of how cumbersome this may get, the goal was much more important than the work to get us there. And this goal that we've reached today, it really is an historic moment here in the City of Pittsburgh. We are strangling this planet with single-use plastic containers. And again, I will reference anyone out there who's listening that has not had an opportunity to view Plastic Wars on PBS. It's very easy to stream, and you have a sense of what it is that we are doing, what we have done to the planet to this point in time. I cannot imagine what this planet might look like in another 10 years, or 15 years, or 20 years if we, if we continue on this path. I tried to remember this quote last week, and I still can't remember it this week, but it is something to the effect that we don't own the planet, we just borrow it from our children. And that's, that's the most important piece of today. What are, what are we leaving behind? What responsibilities are we willing to accept to leave behind a planet that our kids won't have it? And what will that planet look like? We heard from Tom Brady from Washington today talking about the need for additional garbage cans, and his plea for us to reduce waste. And it is key. There is, there is no more important element in this conversation than reduction, right? Reduce, reuse, then recycle. And how do we go about reduction? And this bill represents that absolute perfect opportunity for us to take one piece of single-use plastic container out of the waste stream, accept our responsibility to cart our purchases in a responsible manner and reduce. What councilwoman, would you, would you even be able to estimate what we think the number of single-use plastic bags go into a, into the waste stream on an annual basis? Tens of millions? Am I exaggerating?
Well, Americans use 100 billion, billion with a B, plastic bags each year. Americans.
So, please say that again. This is staggering.
So, the statistic I have is that Americans use 100 billion with a B, plastic bags per year.
It's just, how do you wrap your brain around that kind of irresponsible behavior? And what we've learned through the councilwoman's work is that the industry thought by reducing the thickness of the bag, it could ultimately be beneficial to using less plastics. But what we have found is the thinner the bag got, the more difficult it was to recycle in any way. So, actually, it only added more to landfills. So, there are, there are moments, you know, in my now 15 years of sitting on this council, that I have been incredibly proud to serve here. But this, this one is monumental. This is truly a landmark in what a council like we can do collectively in our responsibility to reduce our waste and to require better of ourselves, and better care for this planet and what we are going to leave behind for those that come after us. So, kudos and congratulations. I'm beyond honored to support and vote for this bill today, and I appreciate all the work of everyone that went into doing this. I had the pleasure of attaching my name to the bill to show my support, but the heavy lifting and the, the heavy lifting really was done by the councilwoman. And I, I, for one, am personally in awe and very, very thankful for your work. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other conversations, Coghill?
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilwoman Strasburger. Wasn't without any pushback, I will say, on my part. I did get some phone calls, but the positive remarks far outweighed the negative. So, you know, I think that is a lot of credit. You can see the history of this bill, dating back to January, as many times as we held it and, you know, you know, started out. You made many good improvements on it. And that's, that's what I'm most pleased about. You got it to a point where I think, you know, it was acceptable for everybody. And thanks for your diligence on it, and proud to support it.
Any other conversation, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a minute to thank the Councilperson Strasburger. I think you're, you hit the nail on the head that it's, it's a monumental moment for Pittsburgh, but also, you know, the example that's set here for other cities of what can be done to reduce this waste. You know, I spoke, well, you know, I made some comments last, last Wednesday about the importance of the bill. And what I mentioned was just, you know, how you go through all the, all the important meetings and everything to, to make the bill come to, you know, come to completion. And today, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, we, we passed the bill, and, you know, there, there's still a little bit of road to head along the way. I remember, I don't want to take away from the moment, but I just want to say that I'll, I'll be there with you in support of implementing this bill, just like we know with the lead safety bill. But there's, you know, a few more steps in place to be done, and I'd like to, you know, be supportive, as much, you know, offer as much support as I can. You know, just today, we see the analysis for lead, that we're, we're coming under a contract with a, with a lab to analyze the lead dust wipes from, from homes on the lead safety bill to improve the environment and residential structures. And, you know, I'd just like to offer my support, you know, offer my support previously on this bill, but also, you know, any support moving forward, anything I can do to, to make sure this is fully implemented. So, I want to thank you and all the, all the council, the full council for the support, and, and also thank all the supporters and, and groups like Penn Environment that have been so instrumental in this, in this process. So, I thank everyone, and today's a good day.
Any others? Councilwoman Strasburger, certainly thank you for your leadership, for us to be a great city. It takes multiple priorities and multiple things for us to work on together, and you are making this city better for us and our children and our children's children. Thank you very much for your leadership. If there is no other conversation, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 245, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for April 6, 2022, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 221, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 44, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement with Computronics for the Provision of a Permitting Licenses Package to Change the Funding Department for 2022.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a plea, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 246, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for April 6, 2022, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 87, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 154 South 15th Street in the 17th Ward. Bill Number 180, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for UPMC Presbyterian, 3701 Fifth Avenue.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? I would say, just to word, we're going to pass this sewer module, which I assume is for the new UPMC facility on Fifth Avenue, a multi-billion dollar new facility that will contribute billions of dollars in profit to UPMC. We are proud of our medical and our university partners, but I cannot let this bill pass without at least saying it is sad that these great partners have not partnered with us in a significant way financially. They are, we know that in some cases, they are reaping multimillion dollar profits, yet they are using public roads, they are using public infrastructure. They are traveling both their clients and their staff on these roads, but they are not paying their fair share. We had a bridge, Fern Hall Bridge collapsed. We have been warned that our infrastructure is in crisis, and the largest organizations in our city, the ones that are making the most profit from our city, who employ the most people in our city, are not sharing their resources. They are not sharing their resources with our city. It is sad, and it's almost shameful. I do love the institutions, but I am, I am hopeful with, that we will move forward and that Mayor Gani will sit down with them, and they will now start paying their fair share so that we can specifically start to pave our roads in more efficient ways, and in particular, fix our aging bridges. And so, I call on them to do that. I think they will do that. It is the right thing to do. With that, the bill, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. Now, we go to motions and resolutions, and we do have a will of counsel.
We do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Madam clerk, would you mind if I read it? It's somewhat personal, and I would like the opportunity if I could. So, I appreciate members' support as I put forward this will of counsel. So, I'd like to read it as follows. Whereas House Bill 972, the so-called Save Women's Sports Act, is the latest legislative attack against LGBTQIA+ community that, if passed, would bar transgender females in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania from participating in youth sports in categories that align with their gender identity. And whereas youth sports have been empirically shown to teach children accountability, dedication, and teamwork, and students that participate in youth sports achieve higher both academically and professionally.
and professionally. And whereas transgender students are entitled to every single opportunity that cisgendered students have, and House Bill 972 is a cruel bully tactic specifically on trans girls and a sad showing of political theater from legislators that have full knowledge of Governor Wolf's intent to veto such abhorrent legislation. And whereas allowing discussion of this bill on the House floor would inflict transgender youth to witness bigotry and hatred regarding their quality of life as well as emboldened bullies on the floor and in the media to additional, in addition to empowering school boards to pass such laws. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh affirms and continues to reaffirm that trans girls are girls and trans boys are boys in the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh is both a city with a rich history of sports as well as a deep commitment to inclusivity, and the council of the city of Pittsburgh condemns this vitriolic and dangerous legislation that is a complete affront to Pittsburgh values. And whereas the council of the city of Pittsburgh condemns discussion of this hateful and dangerous legislation in its strongest possible terms. And so now therefore be it resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh denounces the attempts of Pennsylvania legislators to prohibit transgender athletes from participating in sports and urges Pennsylvania youth sports teams to adopt policies of inclusivity for their teams. And be it even further resolved that a copy of this will of counsel shall be sent to the Allegheny County delegation of the Pennsylvania House and Senate, the chairs of the State House and State Education Committee, and Bill 972 sponsor representatives Barbara Glium and co-sponsors Representative White, Kiefer, Gados and Borowitz. With that, I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Any other conversation about the bill, Mr. Cross?
Yeah, I'd like to just read a short statement from, and help me to get back to where I'm supposed to be. This is just a brief statement from Jody Madison. And she is the interim president of the Human Rights Campaign. And she's quoted in an article that states that 2021 was the most dangerous year on record for transgendered and non-binary people. And her statement goes as follows. Each person is a whole person and has a rich life torn from us by senseless violence, driven by bigotry and transphobia, and stoked by people who hate and feared transgender people and the richness of their experience. Dehumanizing rhetoric has real-life consequences for transgendered community, particularly transgender women of color, but especially Black American transgender women. We have seen an unprecedented number of bills introduced in state legislatures attacking transgendered youth, trans adults. The moment we are in is clear. They have attacked transgendered people's right to health care, right to exist in public, a right to live openly, and the ultimate goal of dehumanizing and erasing their very lives and their experiences. So I I couldn't possibly say it any more eloquently than that. And we did not want this moment to pass without clear opposition to House Bill 976. And I appreciate members' support, and I'll open it to any other comment that members might have.
Other conversation. Ms. Strasburger.
Mr. Chair, I really just wanted to thank Councilman Kraus for his leadership on this. It's, I know that some might think of will of councils as symbolic, but during a year that I would agree is has been among the most dangerous for transgender individuals and trans youth across the country, that it, I I know that it comes as a great comfort to know that there are allies in government, regardless of the level of government, regardless of whether we are the ones passing the laws or blocking them, demonstrating our support for the trans community in Pittsburgh and across the Commonwealth, I know, comes to as great comfort. So I'm wholeheartedly in support of this. And I I really want to commend you for bringing this to the table today. Thank you.
Any other conversation, Ms. Gross?
Also, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And I support the will of counsel and I applaud your leadership. And we should all stand up for our trans neighbors. They're our neighbors, and that's what we're here for, to stand up for them.
Other conversation. I support this legislation. It's also part of what I think is the sixth sports culture in this country. If you go to Finland, I have two sons that were athletes, played high school basketball and were pretty good. But I have always run into discrimination with coaches. Finland produces the most Olympic athletes per capita in the world. And they do it by not having competitive sports when the kids are young. Every kid plays, regardless of race, gender, sexual preference. This idea that we have high school and pretty much grade school, it's really the grade school children, who this really is disoffensive, right? You have children 11 years of age who are not not encouraged to play sports because they're not good enough. We have sports, we have young, and 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 I have a lot, I think I have the most sports teams of any member of council. But I tell them, I love them. I did not let my kids play high school, um, uh, youth football. One of my sons would have been a great linebacker, fast, big, strong. But I fundamentally do not believe that children, when their minds are forming, should be playing tackle football. Is it is a recipe for disaster and for injuries they will have for the rest of their lives. And so we should not obviously discriminate, period. I'm against discrimination of any type, whether their sexual orientation or race or or gender or 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 identity or any any definition. But in particular, I think it is, it is, it is awful and counterproductive to ban any type of athlete from performing. And in particular, it is, it is harmful not to let all young people, especially when they're young, right? Especially grade school and middle school students. It's it's just harmful to put them in the in the rigor of of competitive sports and have them to have to try out. In my mind, you know, you may, you know, you may play, be awful, you know, at basketball, for instance, that's the sport I love probably the most. You may be awful in fourth grade or fifth grade. You may not develop until you're 12, 14, 15. But if you don't have the exposure when you're young, if they don't let you play in leagues when you're young, you'll never get to that 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 readiness. So I both support Mr. Kraus in the particular in that trans athletes should be allowed to compete. I also, even in a bigger belief, is that we should not ban young people from paying in sports. It is counterproductive in many ways. We should have open, non-competitive sports leagues where young people can just learn. And that's really, I believe, really, actually personally, I believe in all ages. We should all be able, you know, I'm I'm, I have a broken ankle and I'm old, but my mind still thinks it can play. And I would like to find leagues of my own at my speed that I could participate in. And so, Mr. Kraus, thank you for your leadership. I believe in the legislation specifically because we do know that Black, trans people, in particular, people of color, are being disproportionately affected in our culture, right? In terms of discrimination, housing discrimination, and just vitriol, right? Just just there's this this vitriol of hatred toward trans people that you can almost feel in many, in many aspects of our country and in our culture and even in our city. And that there that's never reason to hate, right? We should spend our time as being the best version of ourselves and applauding and encouraging people to be the best version of themselves and allow them to be who and what God has created them or chosen to be. And we should applaud that effort in all ways, at all times. Well, you've heard the will of counsel.
May I just add one more thing before we vote? Many of you probably have already watched this. But if you haven't, please take an opportunity to watch The Death and Life of Marsha P. Johnson on Netflix. Marsha P. Johnson really was largely responsible, really, for the modern gay rights movement even before Stonewall happened. And her story is utterly amazing. She's a murdered trans Black woman that was murdered back in the 80s, I want to say. No, 1992 she was murdered. But it it's it's an astonishing documentary to see the the tenacity of this this woman, how terribly, terribly brave she was and to the point to where she was willing to lay her life down for what she believed in. So The Death and Life of Marsha P. Johnson on Netflix is readily available if you'd like to to watch. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
So I'll go down this road just a little bit. A few, few years ago, Black elected officials had a private meeting with advocates of the LGBT community. And I listened to stories of trans people being kicked out of their houses by their parents, of being beaten up regularly just because of who they were, feeling outcasted and alone and being discriminated against. I remember being bullied as a kid, you know? And I don't talk about it, but I grew up in a place where bullying was was commonplace, right? Where older boys would just pick on you and beat you. I I I identify with that. This is, and it goes under the radar, Mr. Kraus. This this, it it, those of us who are advocates for all people, we know, but it goes under the radar most days, right? The the hatred toward trans people. And it is not right. It is not right. And we should do more as a city and probably as a council, we probably, and we will do more. Everybody should be respected. Everybody should be protected and everybody should be loved. I'll get off my 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 horse. Any announcements? This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a briefing with the Department of Permits, License and Inspection on their proposed licensing simplification. Tomorrow morning at 10 a.m., council will hold their standing committee meeting. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 9 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, this Wednesday, April 13th, at 6 p.m., at the Federation of Teachers, Teachers on the South Sap, there will be another in-person-only public briefing by the reapportionment advisory committee on the proposed reapportionment district maps. You can register to speak at this meeting by filling out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 4 p.m. Wednesday or by emailing cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. The following day, on Thursday, April 14th, at 6 p.m., at the Holwick Russian Y MCA, council will hold another public hearing on the city's proposed annexation of Wuxburg. To register to speak at this hearing, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 3 p.m. Thursday. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2137. Please note this hearing is in-person only. As a reminder, this Friday, April 15th, council and clerk offices will be closed in observance of Good Friday. Also, we want to wish all of you who celebrate Easter and those of you who have other religious practices, we want to wish you a happy holiday season. I need now a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Removed.
For a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. We are adjourned.